We are live captioning our meeting. Please look at the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you'll find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage with a live captioning if you are not sitting here with us in the room. Also Chancellor Dr. Stephen Gonzalez is joining us virtually tonight. Dr. Gonzalez, are you with us and can you hear us?
Yes, I am, President Bittersmith. I can hear you very well. Thank you.
Wonderful. So with that, I would like to now call to order the public hearing in the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board of May 28th, 2024. For the record, I will do a roll call vote of the board members. Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Ms. Butler.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Dr. Norene.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Dr. Thor.
Present.
Ms. Sullivan.
Here.
And myself. With all of that, we are all, we are all present. The first item on the agenda is item number C2, a truth and taxation hearing is required under state law. Maricopa County Community College District is considering a proposal to increase the primary property taxes in fiscal year 2024, 2025 on existing property. Proposed increase is 0.96%, which equals $5,685,857 in additional property tax revenues from existing properties. At this time, I will afford any resident or taxpayer the opportunity to address the governing board concerning the proposed action under consideration to increase primary taxes on existing property. Before we do that, I'd like to call on Ms. Kim Grenio, our CFO, for some brief opening comments. Ms. Grenio.
Thank you so much, President Bittersmith, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of the CEC, colleagues and guests. I am Kim Grenio and I serve as the Vice Chancellor for Business Services. Thank you for giving me just a moment this evening. Just as an overview, this item is for the public hearing necessitated by Maricopa proposing to increase its primary property tax levy for fiscal year 2025. This proposed increase of about $5.7 million represents the seventh year in which we've employed the strategy of capturing savings from the secondary tax levy, resulting from decreases in debt service from our 2004 geo bond program. And we then ship those savings to the primary levy and dedicate those for capital programs. Even with the $5.7 million increase in primary taxes, the overall tax rate for the Maricopa County taxpayers decreases by about 3%. So we're basically saving dollars out of the secondary levy and increasing the primary levy by even less than what we're saving. And that then results in an overall tax decrease for the county taxpayers.
Thank you, Ms. Grenio. Very helpful as an explanation. Are there comments from members of the board? I have no cards for comments from the members of the public, but I will ask again, is there someone here in the public that has comments to make on this particular item? Seeing none, that concludes the truth and taxation hearing we're holding tonight. So let's now move on to item number C3, which is a public hearing concerning the adoption of the proposed budget in the Maricopa County Community College District for fiscal year 2024, 2025. This hearing is also required under state law. The purpose of the hearing is to give any resident or taxpayer the opportunity to protest the inclusion of any item in the proposed budget. At this time, I will afford any resident or taxpayer the opportunity to address the governing board concerning the proposed action under consideration. Again, I do not have any cards, but is there anyone in the audience that has comments on the proposed budget? Are there any comments from members of the board? Seeing none, that concludes the public hearings regarding the Maricopa Community College budget tonight. With that, that concludes the public hearings. Let the record reflect that it is now 6:40. And then with that, we would now like to convene the special board meeting of May 28th, 2024. And again, for the record, I will call roll of the board members. Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Ms. Butler.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Present.
Dr. Norene.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Dr. Thor.
Present.
Ms. Sullivan.
Here.
And myself, again, all the board members are present. So the first item on this part of our agenda is item D2, a motion to levy the increased property taxes as previously described. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Thor. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Is there additional discussion by board members, given the clarity we just had in our taxation hearing? Though in accordance with state law, the governing board will now vote on this motion by a roll call vote. And I will now call the vote. Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
Ms. Butler.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Norene.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Dr. Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Sullivan.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So by a vote of seven zero, the motion passes with our student trustee joining affirmative action to pass a budget that is reflective of, excuse me, the levy of the taxes as reflected in the discussion we had in the hearing. Now we move on to the budget. Adoption of the proposed Maricopa County Community College District fiscal year 2024 budget. Item D3, the agenda is approval and adoption of the proposed Community College District budget for 2024, 2025. In the approving the budget, the board also authorizes the expenditure of budgeted revenues and realized or designated fund balances within the total amount budgeted in each fund. The general fund, the auxiliary fund, the plant fund, the quasi endowment, restricted fund and debt service. The board has previously been presented with a budget that should be acted on whether or not the board approves the 0.96 increase in existing tax levy. Now we've done that, so we're still moving forward. If the board does not approve that tax increase, the total budget in some planned expenditures or reserve will be decreased to reflect the loss of levy increase as a resource. Are there questions at this point by the board on the budget? We've had a number of hearings. If not, is there a motion on the budget adoption?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second then by Ms. Davis. Are there, again, any additional discussion by board members? And in accordance with state law, the governing board will now vote on this motion as well by a roll call vote. Starting again, Mr. Burnett.
Aye.
Ms. Butler.
Aye.
Ms. Davis.
Aye.
Dr. Norene.
Aye.
Ms. Smith.
Aye.
Dr. Thor.
Aye.
Ms. Sullivan.
Aye.
And myself. By a vote of seven zero, the motion passes. The 2024, 2025 Maricopa Community College budget has been adopted. So that concludes the meeting tonight on these items. The record reflect that it is now 6:45. And we are now adjourned of those two special sessions. So with that now, we will move into our regular board meeting agenda, which you, if you are watching us on WebEx, you will find on the screen again. We are also live captioning this meeting. Please look in the chat window of our WebEx meeting where you'll find a link. Please click on that link to open a webpage now with a live caption for this portion of the meeting. Dr. Gonzalez, I'm supposed to ask you, are you still with us?
Yes, I am, President.
Okay, good. You gave me a cert there. So with that, at this time, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting in the Maricopa County Community College District Governing Board for May 28th, 2024. Once again, for the record, I will now call a roll of the board members. You probably all know the answers to this. Mr. Burnett.
Here.
Ms. Butler.
Present.
Ms. Davis.
Here.
Dr. Norene.
Still here.
Ms. Smith.
Present.
Dr. Thor.
Also still here.
All good news, by the way. Ms. Sullivan.
Here.
And myself. The entire board is present still for the rest of the meeting. So with that, I would like to call forward the students from Rio Solado College and the Student Senate to come to the podium and lead us in the pledge of allegiance. If you would join us, please. And before you do that, if you introduce yourself and then start with the pledge.
Hi, I'm Maria Lenna Fierich.
Tara Hayman, I'm the student president for the Rio Solado and SLS chapter.
I'm Safran Wells. I serve as the VP of internship for the PTK chapter as well as VP of Central District for Rio.
Welcome. And then we'll let you lead us on the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Don't go anywhere, ladies. Hang on one second. I have just announcing there are no substitutions to announce, which is part of our normal agenda. So with that, we're obviously going to move into student life reports from Rio Solado on student life and leadership. And I understand there are, in addition to yourselves, your advisor is here as well. She, she would stand, and Ms. McKarran, correct? Welcome. Would you like to introduce the students again, or they look pretty self-sufficient, actually, but.
We try.
All right. Please go ahead.
Good afternoon, President Bittersmith, board members, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. My name is Maria Lenna Fierich and as the current Vice President of Communications for Phi Theta Kappa's Rio Solado chapter, it is my privilege to represent student life before you today. I am here with my fellow student leaders who will be introducing themselves shortly. However, I do want to take the time to acknowledge Rebecca Namachandra as our outgoing student senator. She will be sharing her report to you on Student Senate after our presentation. Next slide, please. We will be sharing the following topics with you today. Student engagement, the National Society of Leadership and Success, NSLS and Phi Theta Kappa, PTK. Next slide, please. This year, we partnered with the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion and Belonging, DEIB Council, to provide a virtual Holocaust tour for Jewish History Month. We explored Arab culture by attending a presentation from Dr. Rana Habib, a professor of Arabic and linguistics at Syracuse University. We also had the opportunity to hear from trailblazers within the Asian American and Pacific Islander, AAPI, community. And we held Black History Month and Hispanic Heritage Month events, all celebrating the history and cultural legacy of African Americans and Latinx. For university transfer days, we leveraged resources working with universities to inform students of transfer opportunities. Through FASFA and financial aid sessions and workshops, students were able to get the help they needed to apply. We provided three financial literacy workshops for students designed to enhance money management skills. These workshops focused on managing money, building good credit and taking measures to protect their identity. Rio Connect is an online community for students to chat with classmates, professors and advisors to share ideas or ask questions to spark dialogue. We are also currently working on renovating a space for students to meet and collaborate in a safe and welcoming environment. Finally, we offer civic engagement events for all students to attend. Next slide, please. The Chancellor's Civic Leadership Medallion Luncheon is one of my favorite events. This year, we had three Rio Solado College students who received this award for demonstrating the highest levels of civic engagement, service and leadership, two of which are standing here today and will be presenting next. Rio Solado College offers many other civic engagement opportunities. The Civic Cypher event hosted by Avanzar was made to empower Black and Brown voices. Student Life is collaborating with several agencies to provide more nonpartisan civic engagement events to inform, involve and increase civic partnership. A few noteworthy ones to mention are the voter registration, AZID clinics and the AZ Town Hall. Looking ahead, we will be having Democracy Student Fellows to further engage both faculty and students. Rio is also committed to becoming a voter-friendly campus. All these opportunities are brought to Rio through partnerships with nonpartisan organizations such as Arizona Clean Elections, Vote Writers, Campus Vote Project and more. Next slide, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Tara Hayman and I am the President of the National Society of Leadership and Success Chapter at Rio. I joined NSLS in fall of 2020. NSLS champions academic excellence and personal growth and supports members in their educational endeavors. The organization empowers the members to be agents of positive change, both locally and globally. Next slide, please. Since joining, I have participated in impactful events and activities. During National Hungry and Homelessness Awareness Week in November, our chapter organized a food drive, a homeless outreach program and a fundraising event to raise awareness and provide support to those in need. These initiatives underscored the importance of community support in addressing social issues and instilled in me a profound sense of purpose and gratitude. Next slide, please. NSLS is more than just an organization. It is a movement dedicated to unlocking the potential of individuals, their leadership development, academic excellence and providing community service. NSLS is shaping the leaders of tomorrow and leaving a lasting legacy of empowerment and impact. Our chapter and members have achieved notable individual accomplishments. We created a subchapter for dual enrolled students and offered an informational session tailored to their needs. Clarissa represented our chapter at the National NSLS Virtual Summit. Shaquisha was honored as one of the All Arizona Scholarship recipients. And Blake served as a student panel speaker at a college-wide event providing valuable student feedback to Rio Solado employees. Next slide, please. Next month, we will celebrate our spring induction for 31 members. This is an opportunity to reflect on the accomplishments of many inductees who have completed their Foundations of Leadership program. This year has been a journey defined by enlightening experiences and meaningful connections. My experiences are examples of the opportunities each member is afforded through NSLS. As I pass the torch to future student leaders, I encourage them to maintain our momentum and continue to offer successful events. Next slide, please.
So my name is Safran Wells. I'm a proud Rio student, an active member of Phi Theta Kappa. I currently serve as the VP of Fellowship for my chapter and VP of Central District on our regional board for 2024, 2025. I recently earned my Associate's in Communication and am now pursuing a secondary credential in Criminal Justice. Today, I'm excited to present the progress and achievements of our chapter over the past year. Next slide, please. First, I'd like to highlight two major projects. The 2023 College Project Team worked closely with our college to lay the foundation for a future alumni awards event. By fostering strong collaboration with real leadership throughout 2023, we are setting the stage to publicly recognize Rio Solado College alumni, students, employees and community partners in late 2024. The 2023 Honors in Action Project Team used gamification to develop study tools and tips for online students and organized a four-part online engagement series as our service project. Next slide, please. We also focused on personal and professional growth this year through hosting student-led biannual induction ceremonies, facilitating student-led workshops and representing our college at three distinct events. Next slide, please. Everything we have done this year prepared us to represent our college on a regional and international level. Regionally, we placed in the top three for the 2023 Distinguished Chapter Award and also received the 2023 College Project Award. Our advisors were also recognized. Dr. Lily Davidoff with the Distinguished Advisor Award and Michelle Kemp with the Paragon Advisor Award. Next slide, please. Skip one, that's okay. If you could go back one slide, thank you. At the Catalyst Convention, our president and two students were recognized internationally for their contributions to our college and community. Dr. Kate Smith received the Shirley B. Gordon Award of Distinction, PTK's highest honor for a college president. I received the Distinguished Chapter Officer Award and Zoe Bell was honored with the Distinguished Chapter Member Award. These particular awards recognize our hard work and dedication to our chapter, college and community. Next slide, please. Looking ahead, we are committed to strengthening our relationships with students and the broader community. We have plans for future events and opportunities for student growth and empowerment. It will be a great year for Rio Solado College's student life. Next slide, please. In conclusion, Rio Solado College thanks the governing board for your continued support. Together, we will strive for excellence and meaningful contributions to our communities. Thank you.
Thank you all very much and congratulations on all of the honors ranging from students to Dr. Smith's. Good job. Oh, we also have a report from our Student Senate and I'd like to welcome the Student Senate. And I understand there are some student senators here and Dr. Keisha Brock, our Associate Vice Chancellor of Enrollment Services is here tonight. And I believe, Dr. Brock, you're going to introduce yourself and the students, correct? Nope. Look like you should.
Not Dr. Brock, but I am happy to welcome our guests, President Bittersmith, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of CEC and guests. My name is Bettina Phillips. I'm the Associate Vice Chancellor of Academic Affairs. And on behalf of my colleague, Dr. Keisha Brock, who could not be here this evening, it is my pleasure to introduce the new Student Senate Chair, Rebecca Namachandra, who will be presenting on their accomplishments this evening. Mr. Burnett will be welcoming our new student trustee and introducing her a little bit later.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, President Bittersmith, members of the board, Dr. Gonzalez, members of the CEC and guests. My name is Rebecca Namachandra, Student Senator for Rio Solado College and Chair of the Maricopa Student Senate. And I'm here to provide you with the annual Student Senate Report. Next slide, please. Alongside me are Zoe Bell, Paradise Valley Community College Senator and Deputy Chair of this year's Student Senate. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize then Burnett, our student representative to the governing board, and extend my most sincere gratitude to our district advisors who have supported our endeavors throughout the year. Kyoki Malloy, Andrea Banks, Michael Contreras and the late Ilo Washington. Next slide, please. Over the past year, our strategy was to begin by creating an intercollegiate network of resources that the Senate could reach out to better address student needs. This included connecting with the range of stakeholders, both within the community college networks and our community at large. To do so, each senator was tasked with participating in events both on and off campus that contributed towards this endeavor. Next slide, please. Some such events include the District Student Leadership Experience, Community College Day at the State Capitol, professional development events such as the Maricopa Student Success Conference and a crowd and personal favorite etiquette dinners. Next slide, please. The senators volunteered in different capacities such as to the Office of Public Stewardship and reviewing proposed common pages changes. Next slide. Within the community such as during Veterans Day week to create and distribute cards to veterans. Next slide, please. And most recently, as student panel contributors to the 2024 Annual District Advisor Conference. Next slide. We were also tasked per Governing Board Policy 4.13 with interviewing and selecting the incoming student governing board member, Temaya Jackson Long, a process that proved a testament to the depth of academic excellence and leadership talent contained within the Maricopa Community College's student bodies. Next slide, please. Another step we took was to harness and leverage those resources in order to identify the most pressing student needs at our individual colleges. And from those deduce which of those needs were commonly shared amongst all students within the respective campuses. This project spearheaded by our Vice Chair and PVCC Senator Zoe was accomplished by creating a comprehensive and brief student survey that will go live this upcoming academic year. Next slide, please. And as a result, we were able to serve as a resource to operational departments within the district and bring in the student voice where it mattered, such as in providing feedback on the My Maricopa Student Portal. Next slide, please. Were also able to serve within different district-wide committees and processes such as the Executive Chancellor and Search Committees, the previously mentioned Common Pages Committee and at our campuses such as through the President's Advisory Committees. Next slide, please. There were also individual and personal wins such as with the three senators representing Australia Mountain, Mesa Community and Shana Gilbert Colleges who were awarded the Chancellor's Civic Medallion for Leadership. Two senators that were awarded the All Arizona Scholarship, two that served as their graduating speaker, graduating class speaker, and all of us that leave all the more confident in our leadership abilities and grateful for the opportunity to have served our community. Next slide, please. So thank you to the board, thank you to faculty and staff and thank you students and community of one of America's largest and our beloved Maricopa Community College District.
Thank you very much. And as mentioned, we're going to be meeting our new student board member here a little bit later in the meeting. So let's move on to the Faculty Executive Council Report. Dr. Ramonika. Welcome.
Madam President, members of the board, Chancellor, CEC, colleagues, honored students and guests. I am Ramonika Goff and it is my privilege to represent the residential faculty as a 2024, 2025 Faculty Executive Council President. Unlike my predecessor, I don't speak Spanish or Latin. And while I enjoy music, I have a difficult time with calling song titles. However, I do appreciate a good turn of phrase. So tonight, I'd like to begin with a quotation from H.E. Lucko. No one can whistle a symphony. At Scottsdale Community College's 2024 commencement ceremony, Chancellor Gonzalez exhorted graduates to honor the power of community. Tonight, I would like to spotlight faculty who did just this and worked across departments, across disciplines, across colleges and across the district to provide enriched learning experiences for students. Literary journals are not new in the district, but it was not until a group of Scottsdale Community College English teachers met for happy hour that the idea for an academic journal for community college students was born. Anyone can have a good idea, especially at happy hour, but two dedicated English professors, Dr. Jared Aragona and Professor Matthew Bloom, made that idea a reality. They collaborated with English faculty to curate quality student essays and worked together to edit and publish an online journal, The Two Waters Review. Next year, The Two Waters Review will be expanded outside the English department to include research essays from students in the Life and Physical Sciences Department. This year, Dr. Aragona and Professor Bloom partnered with graphic arts professors Peggy Deal and Bernie Fritz to involve visual arts students in the creation of a print version of The Two Waters Review. SCC has provided each of the members of the governing board with a copy of our literary journal, Vortex, and our academic journal, The Two Waters Review. Publications that through cross-disciplinary collaboration are entirely written by students, designed by students and printed by students. In fall of 2023 and spring of 2024, faculty from Paradise Valley Community College and Scottsdale Community College engaged in a cross-campus collaboration to host community dialogues on race, gender and class. Led by Dr. Michael Nuska, Dr. Caitlin Sutherley and Dr. Jeff Butcher, these Dialogue Days were designed to sharpen learners' critical thinking and communication skills while strengthening civic engagement and building more inclusive communities. And they served breakfast. The Literacy Partners Program led by Stacy Wilson and Alex Aragon reached across disciplines and campuses to promote student success through reflective teaching, continuous learning and collaboration among faculty. The Literacy Partners Program begins with a summer workshop introducing faculty from across the district to high-impact practices for addressing student success challenges in their disciplines. Faculty then design projects to address these challenges, while the program provides wraparound support for these projects and it fosters community connections through networking opportunities and social gatherings. On May 23rd, Mesa Community College hosted the Literacy Partners Project Showcase that spotlighted projects from nursing, exercise science, communications, chemistry, biology, English, dental hygiene and theater. Each project was designed to foster a deeper engagement with course materials and to create a more inclusive learning environment for students across the district. MCC District Service Learning is a shining example. MCC District Service Learning is a shining example of the power of community. In 2023-24, service learning projects across the district engaged a total of 2,857 student participants in service experiences that positively impacted their campuses and communities. Students, staff, and faculty performed a total of 16,540 service hours during the academic year. Recently, the volunteer investment rate estimated that each volunteer hour invested in a community was valued at $33 an hour. This would mean that a total of $545,820 was invested in the community by District Service Learning. From Glendale Community College, where students, staff, and faculty created 300-plus coloring packets for children waiting in the Phoenix Children's Hospital ER, to Gateway Community College, where students, staff, and faculty worked with the SCC Center for Native and Urban Wildlife to collect and package native seeds for distribution to the community members, to Mesa Community College, where the Random Acts of Kindness Week and Pay It Forward campaigns were successful student-led initiatives. Faculty are helping to foster active citizenship, promote community well-being, and prepare students to be compassionate and responsible members of society. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very.
Now, the Adjunct Faculty Association Report, Kim Bosch. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, President Bittersmith, governing board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of CEC, and students and other guests that we have tonight. Our first news was we just completed our elections to replace six representatives whose terms were either ending or they had other work experiences that were going to take precedence. I'm pleased to announce the following new representatives. For Estrella Mountain, we have Mary Broding, Phoenix College, Deborah Dollar. Scottsdale, Pat Serrano is re-elected. Chandler Gilbert, Claire Taylor, and Elise Marucci-Sous. And Paradise Valley, Lee Chivers. Within four days or five days after our elections, one of the elected members contacted us and said, "I'm sorry, I just got an OIO. I'm not qualified anymore to be a rep." And this year, or in the past year, our VP of Elections and Order created a new elections process using ranked voting. Because of our ranked voting, we were able to seamlessly replace our person that had had to step down. And we had a viable and easily understood way to say, "Here's who's second in command." And both members were happy. The one who had to step down was happy that we had a replacement, and the one who was replacing her was thrilled to have the opportunity. And they were actually really close in their votes. So our second in, second choice was not that far off of a second choice. They've been added to our onboarding system. We have a Canvas course that helps them get up to speed, so they can more quickly acclimate to the role. And our existing reps will also be helping them in their process. On May 11th, we held our monthly AFG meeting, and we discussed how we can better implement data and from the past and future surveys to determine key performance indicators that can help inform our continued success. Mozeru is helping us with working through the data and finding out what ways we can utilize that, share it, improve on it, integrate it, and incorporate it into our adjunct faculty uses for our individual campuses, but also for committees or for other needs that we have. Our adjunct faculty handbook committee team has also shared out our draft copy of the handbook to our constituents. And we're now reviewing the comments before we send our final draft to Chancellor Gonzalez for his approval. We also have, I think I had informed you that Gail Haas will be stepping down, but we have actually developed a proposal to suggest that she be a temporary ombudsman for three months. It'll be a no-cost proposal. She wants to volunteer to help in our transition period. She has been a wealth of knowledge for us, and she holds the big book of all the secrets. And so we are trying to make sure that we have a smooth transition in having her step down from her role, because right now, so many people contact her directly. And so we're trying to develop a way that we can have a transition where she's still able to be a contact person that then suggests that they call the reps and still advises us for a little bit, but also helps us make sure that we don't lose anything in the translation of things. We're also proposing a summer committee that would have a newsletter, and that will also help in disseminating the information that Gail usually took care of. And that way, we'll have some ownership of it. It'll take the burden off as home of reps, so that not everybody has to develop their own newsletter for every campus, but they can add to our general newsletter and also have a conduit for district news to be able to get out to adjuncts. Our reps have the month of June off for our, of our regular scheduled meetings, but we're going to be using the time to do bylaws and other internal committees and also onboard our new reps. And in closing, I'd also like to acknowledge the opportunities that the AFG have had on our campuses and with the district. This past year has held some challenges, but we've also made much progress, and we've had some success in many of our endeavors. We've had a voice in negotiating our compensation. We've created our, we've worked on recreating and adding to our handbook, and we've had increasing involvement and shared governance. On behalf of the adjunct faculty group and all adjuncts, I appreciate that you're listening to all of our voices and also giving us the platform to engage. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. We also have the staff representation update. And while they're coming forward, Calvin Devole and April Roll, and I will just remind the board, this is Calvin's last meeting, last report, I should say. So thank you for your service, and I, it looks like I'm calling on April to start, is that right?
Yes. Good evening, President Bittersmith, governing board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC, and all the guests. I am April Roll and one of the co-presidents for staff representation. I'll be here for an additional year. Tonight, we are highlighting, oh, next slide, please. Tonight, we're highlighting Gateway Community College, the staff representation members there. Amy Blackman is the exempt senator. Kelly Little, Deborah Phillips. Next slide, please. One more up. Rachel Python, Scott Reddick, and Mark Kolski are the representatives for, from Gateway Community College this past term.
So recently, we had the opportunity to sit down with governing board member Dr. Thor and talk briefly about staff policy and staff representation and how staff representation interacts with staff policy. So we thought it would be beneficial to kind of go over staff representation, how we're structured very briefly, but also how we interact with staff policy. So there's a couple employee groups within Maricopa. You have residential faculty, adjunct faculty, executive contracts, and staff. And there's multiple different levels of staff. Next slide, please. So with classified and specially funded staff, which is the main body that staff representation represents, you have three subgroups. You have sworn officers, which is Maricopa police officers. You have non-exempt from overtime hourly and exempt from overtime salary. Next slide. Now, within those three groups, you have a staff council. So you have the sworn officer council, the exempt staff council, non-exempt staff council. And those three bodies make up the bulk of staff representation. Those three councils also feed into the staff senate, led by the co-presidents. The staff senate is a senior council that does a lot of decision-making. They take a lot of recommendations from the councils, and they also participate in a lot of different committees, task force councils throughout the entire district. Also, as you can see from the visual, they also partake in SPCT, which is the Staff Policy Collaboration Team, and SOPAC, which is the SOP Advisory Committee. Next slide, please. Now, policy within Maricopa, if you know anything about policy, it's pretty complex, right? You have a bunch of external influencers, such as Department of Labor, OSHA, HLC, which is our accrediting body. And through these external influences, you have board policies, which is overseen by the governing board. You have your administrative regulations, which is overseen by the chancellor. And then from there, you have the different employee groups that have their own sets of policies. Staff policy manual is for staff. It's overseen by SPCT, the Staff Policy Collaboration Team. That runs into the Standard Operating Procedures Committee, SOPAC. SOPAC handles many SOPs from the different employee groups, and it's overseen by the SOPAC Committee and District HR. And you can even go deeper, where you can see other SOPs that are college-specific or department-specific even, in the different colleges. Next slide, please. Now, staff representation, we are one of many different groups, stakeholder groups, that partake in policy creation, modification, review, and whatnot. So staff representation both help chair and have multiple members on SPCT. Staff representation also helps chair and has multiple members on SOPAC for Senate Operating Procedures, make sure the policies are executed properly and consistently throughout the district. Staff representation also has an internal committee called Staff Policy Team, and that's, internal committee actually writes and makes recommendations to policy and SOPs. Once they create a policy, they will send it to SPCT. Or once they create a SOP, whether it was recommended or they think there's a modification that could be useful, they will then send it to the appropriate committee, whether it's SOPAC or SPCT. They also collaborate to help with admin regulations as well. Next slide, please. So I want to make it clear that staff representation is separate from SPCT and SOPAC. Those are two separate committees, but staff representation does interact with them a lot. So you have Staff Policy Collaboration Team, and their main purpose is the approval process of policy. And they receive policy from many different stakeholder groups within the district, staff representation being one of them, the internal policy team. But they also get it from Strategic Staffing, the Compensation Committee. There's a lot of different stakeholder groups around the district that will submit policy recommendations to SPCT. It's their job to socialize it, make sure that many different stakeholder groups around the district have eyes on it, get feedback, they can make adjustments, make sure it's good before it finally ends up in front of the governing board, all of you, hopefully approve it. Then you have SOPAC. This is a very similar process. SOPAC makes sure they take recommendations from whether it's staff representation, different stakeholder groups. Many times, if an originating stakeholder group creates a policy, they also create the SOP. SOP is basically the details to make sure that the policy is executed properly so that it's consistent and that's effective. Goes through SOPAC. They do a socialization process, get feedback, then it gets sent to the SHRO, CHRO, excuse me, Dr. Kelly, for final approval, make sure the policy is executed properly. So I wanted to take this opportunity, if you have questions after we get done, I'm quite happy to answer them. But that is the process of how policy and SOPs for staff are created and how staff representation interacts with them. And over the past couple years, we've worked closely with HR and the different stakeholder groups to make sure that we are continuously improving policy and SOPs so that we can be more effective in our operations and help students. Before I end, I want to real fast point out Jason Rich is with us. He'll be replacing me as I step down from a co-president. I want to thank the governing board for your continued support the past two years where I've had this term. It's really been an experience. I've enjoyed it. Also want to thank the Chancellor, Dr. Gonzalez, for all his advice and all the times he takes me to the side and asks me, "Was there a better way to do that?" And also our amazing CHRO, Dr. Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, we will have it.
Board members, any questions? Dr. Thor, I know understands it completely. Thank goodness for her role.
I actually have a question. It's, so don't go away. It's to you, Dr. Thor. When did, so you participated, did we learn that we need to either complicate our process more? I'm kidding. But what was your takeaway from that experience? By the way, good job.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, for that question. Calvin and the senior members of the staff representation group reached out to me after my comment at the last board meeting about the need for, you know, just a general review of our various employee groups, the distinction between policy, administrative regulations, standard operating procedure. And so I met with Jason, with Calvin, April, and Shannon Monchi. And I found it very enlightening, and I did encourage them to make this presentation today because I personally was not clear about the difference between staff representation, the people standing in front of us, and the SPCT. And I figured if I wasn't very clear, there may be others as well. So thank you very much for the follow-up.
Thank you. This was really clarifying for me as well, and I appreciate your time, Dr. Thor, to have worked together. And Calvin, April, it's always a pleasure to work with you, but I had the experience of working with you for one year in your current job, and it was truly a pleasure. So good luck to you, and we welcome the new folks. Thank you for all your work.
And Dr. Thor, I want to thank you as well, too, because with your question from the last board meeting, it's, I think, educated a lot of us. I have the extra advantage of having a few extra minutes with these folks before each meeting, but it's, I appreciate your time doing that, because I don't know that any of us truly understood it until tonight. So are there other questions in the board?
I have a question. Calvin, how long have you worked for the district?
About 13 years.
And did it take you all 13 years to understand this whole process?
It took me 14.
Yes, I would believe it. And how many meetings do you go to with this process?
So it really depends. The last year, I was a chair for SPCT. So we met bi-weekly, but we also had side meetings, we had work groups. So it depends on the policy that's being created. When you go out for public comments or some socialization, yeah, a lot of feedback, hundreds of comments, and you have to go through them and you read them. And a lot of times, you reach back out to people to clarify things, or you take something and you're like, "You know what, they make a very good point. Let's go back and discuss this." It just varies. Sometimes it's weekly, multiple times a week, sometimes every other week if you get lucky, but it's rare.
Well, this did give me a new appreciation for all of this stuff, but boy, it is complicated. So I appreciate you taking the time to explain it to us tonight. Thank you.
Other questions from the board? If not, again, thank you, and April will look forward to seeing you at the next meeting. Thank you. Yes, we're going to move on. We are now moving on to the very important item number nine, which is the Foundation Semiannual Presentation to the Board. And I think we're going to start, are we starting, I feel like we're starting with Brian, or?
Yes, President Bittersmith, as part of my update, this is a semi-annual update to the board. Brian Spicker should be in the room, and I believe Julie Reese may be with them.
I promise you, they both are here.
All right. Well, I will turn it over to Brian and Julie for their brief update. Thank you.
Thank you, Chancellor. President Bittersmith, members of the governing board, CEC, and guests, as well as Chancellor, we're so grateful to be here tonight with you to provide an update about the foundation. My name is Julie Reese. I have the privilege of chairing the board currently, and I'm joined by our executive, excuse me, president and CEO, Brian Spicker, who leads our professional staff at the foundation. So many of you interact with the foundation on a regular basis. We're so grateful for your continued support of the foundation. I'm going to speak a little bit tonight about what we do at the foundation and why we do it. Brian's going to then really dig into some of the metrics that we're really excited to share with you. So next slide, please. As we look at the Maricopa Community Colleges Foundation, we provided an abbreviated mission statement for you, but we but we felt it was really important to share the expanded statement because it speaks to the collaboration and the partnership between the district and the foundation. So at the foundation, we boldly impact our communities through innovation and strategic partnerships for the growth and benefit of the Maricopa Community Colleges, its students, faculty, and staff. We achieve this by making post-secondary education and certifications accessible and affordable for the students. So really, that's why the foundation exists, and that's why Brian and I are here tonight. When we think about how we operate the foundation, our key priority comes down to fiscal management, making sure that we are being good stewards of the funds that we have been entrusted with. So how do we do that? We have a myriad of audits that the foundation performs on an annual basis. We have investment management that we work with consultants to accomplish. And then the scholarships themselves, managing the application and the award process, those are hugely important. And just to give you context, we have more than 1,140 endowed scholarships that the foundation manages. So it is a large number of scholarships that are impacting students' lives, and we're thrilled to be able to do that. As we look at the fundraising aspect of the foundation, we've delineated the four categories for you. Obviously, scholarships crucial for the students, but we've really seen over the past couple of years is that even more so than the scholarships, there are basic needs and emergency funds that are unmet without support from the foundation and from our partners. So that's been a crucial aspect of what we do. And then, of course, the college program support itself. So how we do our work is through leveraging relationships. Many of you, including President Bitter Smith, have brought your relationships to bear in terms of our Heroes of Education event and our work at the foundation, and we're extremely grateful for that. We're also grateful for all of the support of the Chancellor and the college presidents. So it's really a team effort at the foundation. I'm going to talk a little bit more about that on the next slide. So as you think of who is the Board of Directors, the strength of the foundation truly lies in its people. And as you'll see, hopefully, a lot of familiar names on this slide. I did want to specifically offer extreme gratitude to the governing board members who do double duty on this board as well as the foundation board, Dr. Narene, Kelly Butler. Also want to thank the Chancellor and the college presidents, Ray Rivera, Kate Smith, Greg Peterson. We benefit tremendously at the foundation from the time and the talent of our governing board and our college president membership, but also our general volunteers that you'll see listed on this slide. We have a very diverse and dedicated Board of Directors representing a huge cross-section of the business community that really makes Maricopa County thrive. So we're fortunate to have that. These are individuals who donate their time and their financial resources. We call ourselves a Give and Get Board. We expect to give our time and our financial resources and to get others to do the same. So it's a great opportunity for us to really support students. Recently, at the beginning of this month, the foundation participated with the district in the Be a Student Hero Campaign, or BASH. And I'm very pleased to share that the board was able to raise more than $74,000 on that district-wide Day of Giving. So really excited that my colleagues on the board and many of you in this room made that $74,000 possible that will be given to students. So as we look to the future, we are focused on Empowered for Student Success. That's something that we're, again, very excited to partner with the district on. Next slide, please. Speaking of empowered for student success, I had the opportunity to briefly present to the RDC. We wanted to note that the success of the foundation is tied in many ways to the success of the colleges, and so we work very closely with the RDC. You'll see Judy Sanchez, Neelam Patel. Those are some of our wonderful foundation staff members that are working on a daily basis to really make the mission happen. And with that, my next slide is all about the students. I wanted to share a mission moment with you. This is a student from Gateway who's participating in the nursing program. Her name is Rafiatu.
My name is Rafiatu Amadou, a nursing concurrence and roommate student at Gateway Community College and Grand Canyon University. I want to express my sincere gratitude to the donor for giving me this scholarship opportunity. I chose nursing as my major because I've always loved to help and care for people. In times of sickness, everyone deserves to be taken care of by someone who is very patient, compassionate, loving, caring, and empathetic, and I want to be that nurse. Thank you so much. This scholarship means a lot to me. It will help me pay for my tuition, get all my unnecessary supplies and books so I can focus on my studies. Thank you so much. I'm very grateful, and thank you for believing in me and for supporting my education. May God bless you. Thank you.
She said it so well. I mean, that's really why the foundation exists, and again, we're so grateful for your support. I will now turn the mic over to our esteemed president and CEO, Brian. He leads our professional staff at the foundation, and it's just an example of tremendous leadership. We're so fortunate to have Brian, and he's going to share some of the great work that is happening.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie. Governing Board Chair Susan Bitter Smith, governing board members, Chancellor Gonzalez, CEC and guests. It's always nerve-wracking when they say professional a few times, so I'm thinking, oh, not really. Major accomplishments, I'm not going to read all of these, I'm just going to highlight a couple. You saw Rafiatu talk about the nursing program that she's in. We were able to attract a $2.25 million grant from the Piper Foundation. If we raised 750, it became 3 million. And that was to expand the LPN scale, the LPN program to Glendale and Mesa and expand significantly what was happening at Gateway. We're really proud of that. We've raised 250,000, so we got the first million, and so we're working quickly to raise the other 500 over the course of the next year, year and a half. Grants, we've seen an 84% award rate, and that generated over $4 million. But we know there are some headwinds in the grant-making area. Last year was our peak year in bringing philanthropic grants in. What are those headwinds? It's inflation, it's an election year, and it's uncertainty for our corporate partners. And so while we've had a great 84% gain rate, the dollar amount has declined. And some of our biggest supporters has been the case, and that has been the reason. So we're making headway, and we'll continue to do so. The other area is the expansion of the Promise Programs. I'm happy to say that our presidents have done a great job in moving that forward with the foundation. More recently, Tempe and Scottsdale, those cities will be launching a Promise effort. So we're really proud of that. The next slide, and this is where my professionalism comes into question, because the next slide, the footnote, one of the footnotes is incorrect. I'm sorry, just saying, I apologize. That first footnote with the red asterisk should say "totals include bequests." And that makes a difference. It's really important because this is the total revenue that's coming into the foundation. An important slide, and it doesn't look that good, does it? In these recent years post '21, '22. But when you pull out the bequests, that's where it really matters. And so in that '21, '22 year, we had a $5.6 million bequest. Those are outliers. What we want to do at the foundation with our colleges is increase the base and then let the bequests be additive. So I'm excited to say that '22, '23, that's the new base. That's about, when you pull the bequests out, that's about 11 million. And so this year, the last bar on that chart is for 10 months through April 30th, and we're at 8.5. We believe we will get to 9.5, 10 million based on requests we have out there. So that's a big accomplishment to move from where we were for decades at that 4, 5 million, and more recently, $6 million base. And so we expect to see continued growth in the base and celebrate those bequests. Next slide. This is an important metric in terms of looking at the value of what the foundation brings to our students and the support of the system. And so from, we looked at the direct contributions, what's going into the districts, the colleges, and students. And this slide shows for three fiscal years, and the terracotta color is for the last nine months. We expect to see that we will surpass 9 million going to, for that year, direct supports to students and the colleges. Where we've grown has been, much like the LPN expansion effort, we're doing much more material support to colleges, faculty, equipment, things of that nature, while continuing to fundraise with scholarships and student supports. The next slide shows you where we're at. It should say "recent history of the corpus growth", but it's really the past three years of where we're at in our corpus. To give you a perspective, in fiscal year 19, 2019, we were at 45 million. And so you're seeing a steady growth in what's happening to our corpus. And this past March 31st, our last quarter, we broke through the 70 million mark. And that's a big deal. Now, that can change, it fluctuates with market conditions, but our contributions have grown, so it somewhat mitigates what's happening in the market with investments. And we, someday, we hope to be at 120 million, 300 million. That's where we need to be with an organization this size of the district. Next slide. This really gives you an indication of some of the headwinds, okay? Not only were we seeing headwinds in corporate giving, but the Be a Student Hero is a single day of giving. Employees of the system, our system, our employees are well into 60% of the givers of that. What we haven't done as good a job that I would like to see by now is cascading into the broader community. But what does this slide tell you? Well, we almost made last year's amount. If you peel away, you can see the employee giving is down. Not the raw numbers, not too significant, but the employee average gift is down. Inflation, uncertainty, expenditure limitation. There are a lot of headwinds from a systems perspective that employees are dealing with. Next slide. This is an area of continued growth, and that's our Promise Programs. I'm not going to read everything here, but what's important to note is College Promise, a national organization, is coming here for their first national convening next week. They're intrigued with the idea that Maricopa, a complex system of 10 colleges, can have a Maricopa Promise, which is critical, and this idea of adding adult learners to the mix. And also really looking at last dollar in and creating a stipend because the last dollar computation is very difficult after Pell Grants, et cetera. So they're coming here, and there'll be folks from all over the country, plus a good representation of our college system and the colleges around the state. Dreamers, the last bullet there, that was two weeks ago, 370,000. We closed the gap. A week ago, we've now raised 400,000 for our Dreamer Promise Program. Next slide gives you information on the Promise Program participants. I think there's one more slide. Yeah. First generation, female, BIPOC, attention 70%. These are students that have a lot of needs, and it's a needs-based effort with the Promise Program. The Dreamer Promise, 84% persistency rate with a GPA of 3.3 and carrying 11 credit hours. Pretty impressive with our Dreamers. Next slide gets in a little bit into scholarships. And again, you've had these slides for a little bit. What you'll see, what's important to note is many students get more than one scholarship. So when you look at this, you'll see that there were 14,000 applications in 24, 4,000 awards thus far. We're now awarding summer scholarships in the total number of students. What's great is the average award amount has stayed in that $718 range, and with a credit hour of $97, we're really having an impact on a student on a semester-by-semester basis. And so, given that we're 10 months in, that 2.9 million in 2024, we think we'll reach that 3.5, 3.7 million by the end of the year in terms of strict scholarships. What's been interesting, though, is, and I can feel the Chancellor's eyes moving me along quickly, even though he's not in the room. But what's important about this is stipends and internships is a growing concern. We almost allocate as much in stipends that we do in scholarships now, and that has an impact on persistency and completion. The next time I come in front of you, I'll give you some data around that piece of information. So a little bit about scholarships, next slide, characteristics. I'm going to point out that persistence rate across scholarships recipients is 82%. We take pride in that. Applications keep going up. If you look at the fall application count, and that's just fall, that's not spring of '25, we'll probably be at 16,000 applications. We have to raise more money. I mean, the bottom line is the need is there, and our students show it with their requests. This next slide is the Emergency and Basic Needs Assistance. And we've been giving steadily about 4, 500,000 out over the course of several years. And what I would say is the intensity of the student needs is greater. We saw that with inflation, so you can see the average award went to $419 per student. And with that, I turn it over to Julie.
Thank you so much, Brian. So as Brian has shared, there is a tremendous amount of meaningful work that's being done at the foundation, and so many of you in this room are proud of it. So I just wanted to say thank you, President Bitter Smith, and to the governing board, to the CEC, to the Chancellor, to all of the volunteer board members, and especially to our foundation staff because Brian leads a team of extraordinarily high-performing individuals, and they're a key aspect of how this is all happening. So it's a great team effort, and we're so happy to share our story with you tonight. With that, we would welcome any questions.
First of all, let me say thank you to you, Julie, and your board for all of your volunteer work, and our two board members, Kelly and Tom, for your service on the board. Are there questions? Yes, Ms. Smith.
Thank you for that presentation, really helpful information. My first question about the Day of Giving, forgive me for not knowing, do you have a matching partner that matches, for example, everything that employees donate or something along those lines?
Thank you for that. We have had matching partners but not matching everything. So we did have a new board member who represents Amazon, challenge our board, which that 74,000 was their piece of the 184. He said, "I've got $10,000. If you can match it, the 10,000 goes towards Be a Student Hero." But we want to see more of that. The other piece, Jacqueline, is for the first time, but we didn't have experience with it, and it hasn't happened soon enough. But Fries became a partner in this, and they put end caps, it's something that sits at the end of an aisle that had Be a Student's Hero. The problem was it could only get done two weeks before the Day of Giving. So next year, we know we can do that. And then, of course, Swire, I think it was Coca-Cola, I can't say the other name, provided some drawings for that. So we're trying new things to grow it, but we've got to get outside of our import being the mainstay and into the general population.
Yeah. My other question, I know it's hard to track alum from 10 different colleges, but do you have a sense of alumni giving? Are we trending upward, or do we need to clean up some data in that area?
Yeah, it is difficult to... Yeah, it is, it is difficult to to track. And I unfortunately, that difficulty translates in not having great strategies to do that. Now alumni engagement is occurring. It's not necessarily translating into gifts. Important that it occurs. All boats float. We hope our alumni all do great in life and remember us as that place they got their start, not the place where they finished, right? Soon with bachelors, we may have some of that. But what we find with our alumni, their giving goes to that call, that university where they either got a bachelor's or a master's. It's been very difficult to crack.
Thank you.
We're and we're not the only ones. Every community college is trying to figure this out.
Yeah, I understand that. Okay, my last question. In the fiscal year coming up, what is on the horizon that we should be really looking out for? Is it further expansion of nursing related efforts or, you know, what should we be really looking forward to ahead?
So we've been working with the colleges and have a great inventory of what their needs are over the course of the next three years. And so we're developing strategies around how to move those gifts that would support those things the next three years. And that includes the district, things like auto enrollment that that would be really helpful. And so, yeah, those things are being put in place so that we can. We're hoping, again, we want to get that baseline to ten, twelve, thirteen million, and that's how we're going to do it.
Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, Brian and Julie. Unless there are other questions? Oh, okay, so we, this is the SOC presentation, Dr. Gonzalez, you're missing it.
Thank you again.
Okay. Let us move on now to the chancellor's report. Dr. Gonzalez, I know you have some things to share with us.
I have a few things to share with President Bittersmith. So President Bittersmith, members of the board, members of C E C and guests that are with us there this evening. Apologize for not being there in person, but I'm happy to be here and participating virtually. So appreciate the opportunity to do so. So you had the students from Rio Salado who gave their update on what they're doing. So in keeping up with my past reports, I'm going to give you some more college specific data related to Rio Salado. In spring of twenty twenty four, Rio Salado experienced a seven percent increase in attempted credits over the prior spring term and a four point five percent increase in enrollment with a notable thirty five percent increase in service to international students over the prior spring term. In the area of dual enrollment, the college served nearly ten thousand students across forty eight partner high schools this year, with a record number of three hundred and three seniors completing their college degrees and certificates at the same time as their high school diplomas. Some points of pride for Rio Salado, the faculty successfully transitioned sixty three percent of the more than six hundred online courses to low cost, no cost O E R, which essentially decreased student cost. Rio Salado College Luke Air Force Base Training Center was named one of the top twenty military CLEP test centers worldwide, administering the highest number of Dante's funded CLEP exams. CLEP exams provide students and the military community the opportunity to earn college credit and achieve their educational goals. And Rio Salado also launched its first ever online learning program using laptops at Perryville Women's Prison, creating a pathway for future growth and impact on reducing rates of recidivism. Moving on to chancellor's goal update, specifically one A Maricopa Emergency Response Plan updated and tabletop exercises carried out. In addition to completion of district and college emergency management plans in January, the chancellor's executive council attended emergency management training on May fourteenth that was facilitated by Wes Dyson, who currently serves as the director of the Coquenito County Emergency Management Department. This was a valuable exercise in crucial in preparing our leaders for situations higher education institutions are facing across the country. To sustain and strengthen these efforts, we are moving forward with the recruitment process for a system wide emergency manager and chief of police. For enrollment, the spring semester, the way that we ended up for the spring semester headcount was up three point seven percent from spring of twenty twenty three. And FTSE was up about four point eight percent from the previous spring semester. The summer and fall semesters are looking really good. Summer session, which starts really soon, is currently up nine point seven percent compared to this time last year. And currently, fall semester enrollment is up eleven point four percent when compared to this time last year. And FTSE is up ten point six percent. We typically see a little shrinkage between now and the fall, but those are very impressive numbers to start off with. For legislative update, the legislative session is just over a month until the budget is due. And our government relations team is optimistic that both our community college promise proposal and the inclusion of our bachelor's degrees in Arizona Teachers Academy will be included in the final package. There's few significant partnerships or opportunities that took place recently. On April twenty fifth, I joined Governor Katie Hobbs, A C four and local leaders to launch the Arizona Community College Workforce Scholarship Program. The four point five million dollars in the statewide scholarship funding will help community college students earn a credential in eleven high growth fields. We're going to see, Maricopa will see, I I think it's between one point three and one point four million dollars of that total scholarship. On May first, I was, I was, I joined ASU and Maricopa leaders for the Blackstone Charitable Foundation announcement of a one million dollar grant to establish a Launchpad Program at ASU. The program focuses on entrepreneurship and will support our students in Maricopa, connecting them with various resources, including workshops, paid internships and pitch events. I want to thank Board Member Smith, who helped turn us on to the opportunity to partner with ASU on this this grant opportunity. So she was also in attendance, in fact, emcee that event. So thank you, Board Member Smith, we appreciate your support there. On May fourth, we welcome the U S Secretary of Treasury, Dr. Janet Yellen, who toured Mesa Community College's Automated Industrial Technology Lab and Construction Trades Facilities to learn how we are preparing students for high wage jobs at high demand industries. Sort of aside, Pete, or other item here that I want to give you an update on. This is regarding one of the consent agenda item, access items that is coming up specifically G fourteen, which reads the approval of university license agreements for use of office space at South Mountain and Scottsdale Community Colleges by Arizona Universities for five years, beginning July first of twenty twenty four through June thirtieth of twenty twenty nine. Prior to renewing long term lease, longer term leases of Maricopa spaces to other other educational entities for fiscal year twenty twenty six, we will convene a group to review this practice, which will include measuring the value of our students, ensuring appropriate rates are charged, the types of spaces exclusively dedicated to these entities, additional benefits and access such as leases provide, and then standardization across the system will be explored. So again, this group is going to be convened and we will explore these items. So although we have leased spaces for the purposes of the universities in the state having a presence on our campuses to assist students we wish to transfer or who wish to transfer, it is always healthy to provide a periodic comprehensive review of the practice. As soon as we have a proposal out of that with recommendations for some changes, we'll be coming back to the board to share what those changes will entail. And, you know, we've officially ended the the academic year at the conclusion of the spring semester, which we celebrated with numerous convocations and commencements. We had a historic commencement season. Rio Salado graduated two students who earned their bachelor's of applied science and public safety administration. And South Mountain Community College awarded four students with their Bachelor of Behavioral Sciences degree. We concluded the season, the graduation season with the U S First Lady, Dr. Jill Biden, who joined us for the Mesa Community College commencement celebration, who provided an inspiring keynote speech to over six hundred graduates. I want to give a big congratulations to all of the students who earned certificates and associate's degrees and who are either entering the workforce or transferring on to one of the universities in the state or around the country. I want to especially thank our faculty, staff and administration for what I believe is another successful academic year, and I hope that you would agree with me. I hope our faculty, staff and administration find time to relax and recharge this summer. And I want to thank you, President Bittersmith and members of the board for your continued leadership and support for this past academic year. Again, I believe we can say that it was another successful, exciting, historic year for Maricopa. President Bittersmith, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. Are there questions, Dr. Gonzalez? Seeing none, thank you very much for that complete update and report. And I would agree with you, a very successful year. And we'll get to that when you get to board member report. You're going to hear it, I think, over and over again, but you're going to have to listen to it because we're all going to say it.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. With that, let's move on to item ten, which is yet another award, Emeritus Awards and Recognitions. And tonight we have one from Paradise Valley. And the recipient is not here, but Dr. Jenna Schwartz is here to announce him and read a letter from him. Schwartz.
Good evening, President Bittersmith, members of the governing board, Chancellor Gonzalez, C E C members, colleagues, friends of Dr. Dale and guests. It is my pleasure tonight to recommend to you that Dr. Paul Dale received the Emeritus Distinction. It is unfortunate tonight that Dr. Dale cannot be with us, but he is for sure with us in spirit and his friends are joining us virtually. As we are sharing a few thoughts tonight, you will see pictures of Dr. Dale's time at P V C C and within Maricopa. At this time, please let me welcome to the podium Dr. Felicia Ramirez, who is a longtime colleague and friend of Dr. Dale, who will share with you a bit about his time at P V C C.
Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Schwartz, for chancellor, guests. Good evening, everyone. Over the years, some fabulous people have walked through the doors of P V C C and employed their talents and abilities for the betterment of our community. Tonight, it is my privilege to speak on behalf of my colleagues and pay tribute to one such individual, our former president and forever friend, Dr. Paul Dale. In the complex and ever changing system we work within, it is so important to recognize the individual contributions that persons make. I hope that by sharing a little bit about the work of Dr. Dale and his unique efforts, we may all have greater appreciation for him and those who work alongside us every day to advance the community college mission. Dr. Dale arrived at P V C C in January nineteen ninety seven as the Associate Dean of Student Affairs. From the moment he walked on campus until his retirement in September twenty twenty two, twenty five years and seven months, Dr. Dale was an advocate for student success, a true believer in the power of education, and a tireless advocate for positive social change. As he began his work at P V C C, Dr. Dale provided the administrative oversight for launching the Student Life Department, Student Leadership Programming, Service Learning, Athletics and Out of Class Assessment, authoring a chapter titled Paradise Valley Community College General Education Case Study. I keep a signed copy of that book in my office, be proud to know that. During his time, Dr. Dale became the dean of students and then Vice President of Learning Support Services. Dr. Dale was asked to serve as interim president of P V C C twice prior to being selected as the permanent president in twenty ten. During his time, P V C C flourished, opening several new buildings, a new campus at Black Mountain and new academic programs. Most importantly, he continued to bring learning alive for students, employees and the community. He didn't just rise to challenges, he empowered those around him, trusted them and gave them the confidence that allowed the college to collectively rise to the challenges that came our way. Dr. Dale ushered the college through a successful reaccreditation process and celebration of its thirtieth anniversary. As a leader who cared deeply about the success of P V C C and the role of Maricopa Community Colleges in the valley, Dr. Dale agreed to serve as interim provost while continuing to be P V C C's president. Then to round out his tenure at P V C C, he overcame unprecedented obstacles to lead the college through the pandemic and beyond. Dr. Dale was amongst the national educational leaders who fully embraced the learning centered philosophy and acted in a way consistent with those beliefs. Personally, I can recall on several occasions in which I was inspired by his ideas and proud that he was my college president. Whether presenting his philosophies, sharing his commitment to learning, his recognition of the most important relationship with the college, the one that occurs in the classroom, or telling us about his latest good book he was reading, Dr. Dale stimulated and energized. He has been instrumental in expanding the curricular and co-curricular comprehensiveness of the college and supporting student success initiatives. He also believes strongly in investing in leadership development that inspires positive social change and wrote a chapter on developing non-hierarchical leadership on campus, case studies and best practices in higher education. In addition to his scholarly contributions, Dr. Dale was active in the community. He served on the Northeast Phoenix Neighborhood Election Alliance, the Foothills Carrying Core Board of Directors, Abrazo Hospital Scottsdale Campus Board of Trustees, Valley of the Sun United Way Cabinet, the Board of Director of North Phoenix Chamber of Commerce and Maricopa Colleges Foundation. In discussion with my colleagues, perhaps what we appreciated the most was his presence and accessibility. We liked having the guy around. Dr. Dale was often found out and about on campus, talking to students, faculty and staff about their experiences and how P V C C could serve them better. He kept the door open, welcomed us into his office and removed traditional power barriers to have conversations on an even playing field. He was a mentor to so many and always cherished the opportunity he had to serve students and the community. Dr. Dale's vision, passion for student success and commitment to all things P V C C are greatly missed, but well remembered. His legacy at P V C C will continue on. We are grateful for his service to our college and community. Dr. Dale's unwavering commitment to P V C C and to Maricopa Community College District make him a most deserving candidate for Emeritus Distinction. Thank you for this opportunity to honor a P V C C hero.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. I would now like to share with the board a statement from Dr. Dale and appreciation of this nomination. It is indeed an honor to be considered for Emeritus status as a capstone to my career. Paradise Valley Community College was my professional home for over twenty five years. And little did I know that when I joined the college in nineteen ninety seven as a very unseasoned Associate Dean of Students, that my journey would lead to the presidency. Allow me to first thank those P V C C presidents who came before me, John Cordova, Raul Cardenas, Gina Cranets and Mary Kay Kickles. It was their mentorship, personal and professional support, and occasional calls to the proverbial wood shed that prepared me to develop into the president that I was. I also want to acknowledge and thank Dr. Rufus Glasper, Dr. Maria Harbor Marinick and Dr. Stephen Gonzalez for their leadership at the system level that allowed me at times to push the edge of the envelope to move P V C C forward. I would be remiss if I didn't recognize the faculty, staff, and most importantly, the students and communities of Paradise Valley Community College for their clearly communicated high expectations driven by consistent, fair and honest support throughout my tenure. Finally, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Dr. Linda Thor, then president of Rio Salado College, who in two thousand and three, following the memorial service of Dr. Gina Cranets, at which I provided the eulogy, sent me a personal note, offering her support as a colleague and her willingness to come alongside me as I navigated my first interim presidential assignment during a very different, difficult time in the history of the college. Thank you, Linda. That meant a lot to me. As president, I operated with two guiding north stars. First, what do we need to do as leaders to ensure that Paradise Valley Community College continues to be a more learning centered college? Secondly, what do we need to do to ensure that Paradise Valley Community College's leading efforts to bring about positive social change? I can't think of two higher ideals or values to drive leadership than creating lifelong learners who are able, interested and willing to go out into the community to ensure positive social change. These are the challenges that I miss most in retirement. To be candid, there were times throughout my tenure that faculty and staff challenged me about the efficacy of wanting to become a more learning centered college. that faculty and staff challenged me about the efficacy of wanting to become a more learning-centered college, when in fact, we already were. During those times, I often reflected on our student success data, our graduation data, our student satisfaction data, to remind all of us collectively that our journey to become more learning-centered was ongoing and anchored by continuous assessment and understanding of student learning outcomes and the degree to which we are meeting the ever-changing needs of our community. In my own continued quest as a lifelong learner, I've been spending time learning more about artificial intelligence and actually applying it to an avocation of creative writing. I find it somewhat ironic that the mechanics of artificial intelligence is not that much different from being a learning-centered college and that the more data AI has access to, the more patterns that it can recognize and use to make better decisions. In essence, a community college president's role differs from AI by first humanizing, then understanding, and applying trends, data, and patterns to make better decisions to improve the efficacy of his or her college for student learning and success. This role brought the most joy to my work as president. Please know that it was a gift and a blessing to serve the faculty, staff, students, and communities of Paradise Valley Community College, and I will be forever indebted to the Maricopa Community Colleges for this professional opportunity. Thank you, and congratulations, Paul Dale.
Thank you, Jenna. I actually was honored to represent the board at Dr. Dale's very last graduation, which was a great tribute to him. I can recall the standing ovation as he left. There were a few tears, I think, from the audience, so it was a great opportunity to recognize that. So send our congratulations to him as well. With that, we are going to now move on to our citizen interim on the agenda. And as you know, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the governing board. In compliance with the Open Meeting Law, the governing board will neither discuss nor take action on issues raised during this portion of the agenda. Where necessary, issues will be taken under advisement and placed on the subsequent agenda. Presenting concerns to the board and free expression of ideas should be communicated with decorum and respect. I do have one person wishing to speak, and we do, as you know, have a three-minute timeframe. So I would ask for Candace Mickelson to come to the podium, please. Candace, thank you.
Good evening, President Bittersmith, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, and members of the C E C and guests. My name is Candace Mickelson. I'm a service and instructional adjunct. And there are a number of my colleagues in attendance this evening, service adjuncts, and I'd like to take a moment to recognize their support. I've stood before you a handful of times now on behalf of service adjunct faculty and my voice and words, both written and spoken, as well as my colleagues, have been shared with my colleagues, with yourselves, and are in the public domain. We share a perspective as service faculty, but understand we do not hold the only perspective. Rather, we've reviewed facts and come to certain conclusions. Those conclusions are only half of the picture as those impositions of power interpret the facts differently. We ask the board, the chancellor, and faculty leadership to a public discussion, dare I say, debate of these facts to reach clarity on the subject of the wage cut our ranks from among the entire employees across the district have and are facing. Only substantive dialogue would assist in understanding a thirty-seven percent pay cut that our new hires and retirees received this academic year and the proposed twenty percent wage cut that the legacy employees are facing with a freeze for the next five years. Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. Onto item G, consideration of the consent agenda. All the items on this section of the agenda are consent matters unless they were moved from the consent agenda this time by either the chancellor or the board. Anyone on the board, chancellor wished to remove any items in consent. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Davis. All those in favor, simply by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? By a vote of seven-zero and the student advisory vote, the consent agenda is approved. Now, we'll move on to item number H, which is the non-consent agenda action items. Approval of implementation of the FY twenty twenty-five salary increases are presented in the district's multi-year strategic compensation plan as approved and adopted by the governing board through Board Policy two-point-seven, Staff Compensation and Benefits. We've had lots of conversation on this item as well. Are there questions from the board? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the implementation of FY twenty twenty-five salary increases presented to the district's multi-year strategic compensation plan as approved and adopted by the governing board through Board Policy two-point-seven, Staff Compensation and Benefits as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Dr. Thor. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, simply by saying aye.
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 All opposed? By a vote of seven-zero on the student advisory board, the implementation of the fall twenty twenty-five salary increases presented in the district's multi-year strategic compensation plan are approved. Let's move on to item I on our agenda, first read and information items. The Employment and Operations Report from March sixteen twenty twenty-four through April nineteen twenty twenty-four. Are there any questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to item two, which is the first read of staff policy proposals regarding Salary Administration A forty-one, A forty-two, Classification and Employment Mobility, and C nine Reduction in Force. Are there any questions at this time? If not, we'll go to the monitoring reports, item J, Budget Annals Report Fund One, General Unrestricted Fund for the ten months ending for thirty twenty twenty-four. Again, are there questions? Seeing none, we are on to community linkage reports. And as I mentioned, these may be a little lengthier than normal, so please bear with us. Before we do that, though, I'm going to call Mr. Burnett Initiative to give a report. But I would like, Lynn, if you wouldn't mind, would you join me here for just a minute? Because what I want to tell you is that Mr. Burnett has been an exceptional student trustee. Come back, come back, come back. So I'm making you stand up so you can see this. He has served us for three years, been very engaged in strategic plan update as well as many, many other activities of the board, has joined us at conferences, has really given us a great input from the student perspective and how I think helped the students grow and learn about the board as well. So Lynn, I realize you're going to be here at the next meeting, but this is going to be a bigger audience. So on behalf of the board, we'd like to recognize and thank you for your opportunity and your service to the board and to the Community College District. So with that. And then we're going to do one after the meeting with the whole board, so. Now you get to give your report.
Goodness. Blacks. I, you know, we do this out of love for, you know, helping people, and you don't ever expect people to get acknowledged or rewarded for it. And when you do, it's embarrassing sometimes, but I definitely appreciate it. And it's been a pleasure serving on the board for all this time. Just amazing people. And you can see it comes through in their heart and how they work so hard. So I'll try and keep it brief. First of all, I just want to introduce the person that will be replacing me. T. Maya, if you would stand up. She's still here?
Oh, there she is. This is T. Maya Jackson Long. And I can tell you that T. Maya, and that's how her name is pronounced, T. Maya. And that's how I got it. T. Maya, she goes by T., but we're going to save her full name. T. Maya Jackson Long. T. Maya is a biomedical engineering student at Gateway. And she also participates in student life and leadership. And she acts on the Committee for the Unity Initiative, collaborating with Phoenix College. She's also one of the two Gateway Community College student ambassadors. She's one of two. She's a member of P T K, and she acts on the Planning Committee for the Intercollegiate Student Leadership Retreat that they hold up north in the fall. I did attended that my first year. I was just blown away by it. Fantastic event. I'm glad you're going to be helping plan that event. An interesting fact, she's going to be studying in Japan in the fall, or in the summer. Is that right? The summer? And she's going to be studying through Mesa Community College. So if you think about this, she walks into this role already participating on multiple college campuses in Maricopa, which I should have done that. That's really good. She's phenomenally poised. I, she has a goal of showing students like her that they can reach new horizons and grow outside of their own expectations. She also values a student voice and perspective through all the colleges and works to make sure that she's impactful and that those changes are for the betterment of her generation. She has big goals and big dreams. And I participated in the interview process with her, and I can tell you, I was, I'm not easily impressed by human beings because we all misremember and we all make mistakes, and human beings are constantly wrong about things. So none of us are perfect, but this young lady, she stole the show. She ran away with the interview. And there wasn't even a question that she was absolutely poised and the perfect selection for this position. And I know you're going to be completely blessed by her presence on the board, and I hope all of you will welcome her as you did me. So, T. Maya, thank you for being willing to sacrifice your time and your energy. I know you're going to do a fantastic job. They won't miss me. Once they have you on this board, I promise you that. You are going to be a welcome addition, and she's met some of you already, but I can tell you, please, please welcome her, because she will do great things for the district from a student perspective. So for my quick report, I went to the A C C double A double C T conference and Governor Katie Hobbs, the A C for the announcement of the Workforce Scholarship Program. That was fantastic to just to be a part of that on the twenty-fourth, on the twenty-fifth. I attended the adjunct faculty awards. I didn't realize they were going to ask me back, but they did. And they gave me the opportunity to speak again, and for some reason, I just have this love of adjunct faculty. And I think that's gotten me somewhere now. I think, I think that's going to lead to something, and not intentionally, but I just, I was really blessed to be able to speak at that, and I enjoyed that. On the very next day, we were back at Rio for the Women's Mentor Program. And I know there, I believe there are some of the women here that were, that graduated from that program. I know the police officer outside that does security for us, she was there. She was recognized, as well as several of you are mentors to the people in that program. And it was just amazing. I didn't really, I wasn't even aware of what it was until I see this place full of people and everybody's excited. It was a fantastic award ceremony. And then the Rio graduation, fantastic to see that first bachelor's degree program walk across the stage. I mean, it was just unbelievable. It was like we all did it, even though I didn't do anything. I felt like, I felt like we were all part of that. It was just great. She was, couldn't have been, couldn't have happened to a better person. She was just humble and gracious, pre-law student, going to move on to be an attorney, already working in a law office, and just doing great thing, a mom, kids, married, and just pursuing her degrees in adult-educated person. And then the South Mountain Community College graduation, the next night, on the ninth, and then the S C C, the Scottsdale Nurse Pining Ceremony. And I met Tom Marini out there, and it was, we were wandering around trying to find our cars. There were so many people there. Never been to a pining ceremony. It was amazing, those nurses. Man, and you got to be nice to them because one day, we're all going to see them. So, you know, but it was, it was, they were, they were, there was just so much excitement on that campus. That was a great, great, great day. So, and then again, and finally ended up interviewing for the new governing board position. And that concludes my report. Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. T. Maya, you have big shoes to fill, but we are just excited to welcome you and look forward to your continuing a great legacy that Linus has started for us on the board. With that, let's move on to Ms. Butler.
Thank you, President Bittersmith. I had the honor of attending South Mountain's commencement, and it was their first-ever awarding of their baccalaureate degrees in behavioral science. What really struck me, I mean, it was wonderful to see those students, you know, and their families. We're all celebrating. What really struck me at the end, we all kind of formed a line, and they went out through, all the graduates went through. And the number of faculty and staff and students were just greeting each other by name and obviously had these bonds. It just, it seemed like such a warm community, and obviously, they meant a lot to each other. So it was wonderful to be there. And then I also, as it was mentioned, I'm on the board of the Maricopa Foundation, and we had our annual meeting and retreat. It was really, really well organized and wonderful to be there with all of our community members and business leaders who support our work and support the work of the foundation. So thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis. Right alphabetically.
Oh, oh, okay. I wasn't prepared for that. Okay. I also participated in the governor's conference, or governor's press conference where she talked about the scholarships. I was at the A A C C T meeting that Lynn talked about. I am indebted to Dr. Marini for allowing me to take his place at the Hoop of Learning Ceremony, which was great. It was so nice to see those kids get their awards. I went to the Lynda B. Rosenthal Lunch as well to listen to the ladies do their little speeches about their mentoring, and they were so inspirational. And I sat there thinking to myself, oh, if I could only be this inspirational. They were so great. I really loved that event. Calvin was nice enough to invite me back for the Veterans Convocation, and I totally enjoyed that. That event means a lot to me personally, being a military spouse. So I appreciate being invited to that, Calvin. Thank you. I also, this year, did the Ability Convocation, which was also another wonderful event. It was in this room, and it was pretty well attended. And I loved meeting some of the people there. And I went to the Nurse Pining at Paradise Valley. I attended the graduations at G C, at Glendale, and at Australia Mountain, and at Mesa. And I am here to tell you, anytime you guys need somebody to come to a graduation or something that's recognizing students, where the students are so excited and the families are even more excited, please tell me, because I just love doing this stuff. It was a real pleasure and honor to be, as to do some of this stuff. So thank you to all of you for offering these wonderful things for our community.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Dr. Marini?
Thank you. Let's see, I made it back safely.
Yes, thank goodness.
And I turned around, even before the jet lag was over, I started attending some of the convocations and graduations. First, I want to thank Deanna Villanueva Sociedad for all the work that she did in putting together all the wonderful convocations and the different affinity groups and all the work that they put in, because those are really special to the students and more personal for the families to attend. So I really appreciate that. And then all the graduation teams. You guys made it look so smooth and so easy. Everything went well. So I came back, and I was part of the Asian Pacific Islander Convocation and the Latinos Convocation and the Native American Convocations. And then I too attended Scottsdale's Pining, Nursing Pining Ceremony. And then a few of the graduations I attended. Gateway, A-PAC Phoenix Rising Stadium. It was a great, it started off a little bit late, but that was a good thing because it was so many people still trying to get in. It just, I was surprised that the stadium was packed. And I was able to see a couple of my students there graduate, a couple of my former students graduate. I also went to Glendals, and I am Yatcho Proud. Because one of the students I mentored was our alumni speaker at Glendale. And I was P C Proud because I had four other students walk across the stage that I worked with before graduate. And of course, I graduated from Mesa, so I was, of course, Mesa Proud when the first lady came to speak. And I too attended the Foundation Board Annual Retreat. And it's always, I always wonder why I'm on the Foundation Board, because I don't know anybody with money. I just know the people who need the money. And so it's always humbling to go to the Foundation meeting and see these people in the community who really do care about our students, who really do care about the work that we do. And it just makes me proud to know that that money, you know, where it's going to and the students that we're working with. Let's see, I also, I had to skip out of the Foundation Board Retreat for an hour to attend the Coursepeak Committee Meeting, which we're trying to refine the process, and I think we're getting, we're making some progress there. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Marini. And we are glad you made it back safely. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I also enjoyed the L. B. Rosenthal Mentor Group graduation. That was my first time attending, and I hope to make it to many more. It was fantastic. I appreciated the invitation to attend and offer some brief remarks at the C G C C graduation in the morning. I appreciated the invitation to send, attend and offer some brief remarks at the CGCC graduation, the morning ceremony. I think I only cried twice, which is pretty good for me. And then I wanted to say to Dr. Lashinsky, I was flipping through this wonderful booklet. And if you have the email addresses of the students who've written some of these pieces, there was already one that caught my eye about conservation. I'd love to be in touch with one of the authors. Maybe in the future they want to put their contact info in there or a little bio or something, because already I was like, I want to get to know these authors. So thank you for sharing these with us. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Dr. Thor?
Well, by the time you get to Thor in the alphabetical order, there's going to be some redundancy.
But you have a unique, you have a unique experience to talk about.
On April the 24th, I also attended the All Arizona Trustees Meeting where the CEO of the Community College Baccalaureate Association presented. And I was a founding member of that organization way back in the mid 90s. So it was wonderful to see how much they have grown and prospered. On April the 26th, I spoke on behalf of the board at the Linda B. Rosenthal Women's Mentor Program graduation. And I want to share with the board, for those of you who weren't there, that the graduates are most appreciative of the program and the opportunity to learn more about Maricopa. On May, excuse me, on May 2nd, I spoke on behalf of the board at the Rio Salado College Commencement. And I want to thank President Kate Smith, who great, gave me the great, great honor of presenting the degree to Maricopa and Arizona's first bachelor's degree recipient. So thank you, Kate. On May 10th, I spoke on behalf of the board at the Chandler Gilbert Community College Afternoon Commencement. This was the first time I have attended a Chandler Gilbert commencement. And I was very impressed that they could conduct an inspiring ceremony in just one hour. Others, yeah, need to get their playbook. It was really, really something. All of this year's events and ceremonies have been very well done. So congratulations to the faculty, staff and administrators who made the ceremonial season so special. And finally, I want to thank Lynn Burnett for being an outstanding student trustee for not just one year, for two years. You've been terrific. We thank you. We'll miss you.
Ms. Sullivan? So redundancy, you ready? First, I'd like to welcome T-Maya to join the governing board at our meeting beginning, I believe, in August. And we look forward to working with you. There are big shoes to fill. I remember, and Dr. Thor, you're, and Dr. Norene, you're there with me when we invited the first student representative, Alejandra, and I believe she works at Mesa or is some, working at Mesa Community College in some aspect and had aspirations to be a lawyer. And I believe that's what she's still on track to do, taking some tight tracks. But she was outstanding, set the pace and Dr., excuse me, Mr. Burnett picked it up. And now the baton is going to you. So we're excited to have your voice and your energy and your commitment and look forward to working with you. Also would like to acknowledge all the faculty, the staff and the administrators who made this an outstanding year. You set the pace again for all of us and we are your partners in the year. And as we tend all the things that we do, we know it's because of your efforts. It's your energy and it's your inspiration that gives us the motivation to do all the things that we tell you that we're doing. We don't do them in vacuums. We do them in partnership with all of you. So my list, thinking back to April, it was like, oh my gosh, what did we all do? The first thing, the next day after our board meeting, went to the all trustee meeting where not only did we learn about the history of baccalaureate degrees for community colleges, as Dr. Thor indicated, but we also had a brief tutorial in AI. And I'm scared to death, so we'll just move on from that. And then also the next day had the opportunity to be at the Governor Hobbs Press Conference that where AACT and AC4 were represented as well. Then trying to look at my calendar and what did we do in the next? The next was the Linda B. Rosenthal Award Mentoring Ceremony. I think that holds significant meaning for me, not just because of Ms. Rosenthal, who I knew personally and was often schooled by Ms. Rosenthal. She and I served on several committees over my work time with her. But I now fill her spot in representing District Three on the governing board. And when we're talking about big shoes to fill, she had a big voice and big shoes and, oh my goodness. So thank you for letting me attend there and I hold that dear as one of the most enjoyable things that I do. From there, I also attended some events at Phoenix College, hosted State Representative Lecking and State Representative Legori at Phoenix College. They had tours and I was present for the end of year celebrations at Phoenix College, which were most fun. And I see you don't have your medallion on Dr. Brett. There was some competition from people in would she represent Mesa or would she represent Phoenix College that they gave her a medallion to ensure that she would be representing visibly Phoenix College. Anyway, that was a fun time. Enjoyed that. During the month, we also held several Public Affairs Committee meetings, which I now chair that committee and we're staying on top of all the legislative activity and government activity that's going on, government relations. So there was that. And now we get to the emotional part, right? I was able to be present and speak at the M- the MACBA, the Black African American Convocation with Provost. And then I also attended the Equality Convocation with Mistress Vickar. And when you begin to see the power of the student's success coming through as they're celebrating themselves and each other and doing it in such intimate ways, small settings with their own affinity relationships. It's not only inspiring, I think it just really gets to the heart of who they are as people and why we see and we serve so many people in our institution. And I ended up getting stalls for both of them. And so next year, I understand I'm getting two tickets to go to the Drag Ball, Drag, Drag Queen Ball. And I'll wear my quality stall. And at MACBA, which they gave me one there too. I'll be wearing that proudly, representing them. And so thank you for those opportunities, which then led to graduation ceremonies. Oh, I did forget one. I attended the meeting with U.S. Treasury Secretary Janet Yellen. Impressive woman. She was a good sport. She ended up with some goggles on and had to manipulate through cybersecurity AI. I don't know what she was doing, but she did it well. She had blinders on. Anyway, impressive. She asked good questions. I did do that. So going back to the convocations, I was able to attend at the, as a guest of South Mountain and was able to hear a few words where, and say a few words. What struck me about that was how many people wore first generation stalls. I think the majority of the people present who were walking across that stage had that stall on and wore them proudly. And the enthusiasm and the excitement of their families as they crossed the stage was just so inspiring and wonderful. So congratulations to everybody who makes and supports first generation students to cross those stages. Very impressive. And then I also attended Phoenix College Graduation. And since I attended there, it's always special for me. It was a pleasure. And I was present at the Mesa Community College Graduation. And I have to say, regardless of politics, our first lady's speech was very inspirational where she spoke to everyone, it seemed in that audience and made a strong impression. So those are my district things. On the other side, as you know, I serve on the Association of Governing Boards Board and a governing board meeting for them. And also involved in replacing the CEO of that organization, not replacing the CEO, filling the position of the CEO. So I've been busy with that. That kind of wraps it up. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. I am the last one, even though I'm alphabetically, so there will be redundancy, but I will try to not duplicate. Let me just first say thank you to Paradise Valley Community College and Scottsdale Community College for inviting me to give remarks on behalf of the board. Interestingly enough, both graduation ceremonies were in the same location, both with fireworks, but very different, reflecting the nature and the community feel that each campus has. And that makes a huge impression, I think, on all of us. And as all of said, the enthusiasm of students and parents is terrific and I'm very grateful to be a part of those ceremonies. I got told both Jen and Eric that the, it's the best part of being on the governing board is to see your success walk across, if you have nothing really to do with except doing this, walk across the stage. So that was, that was great fun. Also, I had a chance to do the nursing pinning ceremony at Paradise Valley as well, which is also great. And then you see those nurses the next night walk across the stage. Very inspiring and hopefully I won't see any of them soon, but they are certainly a credit to what we do. In addition to that, we, I was privileged to join the, the team for the Mesa Community College Graduation. And I think the observation there is what was gratifying to me is there were inspiring remarks from the first lady, but the focus was on our students and on their accomplishments. And you saw the press coverage focused that way too. So the stories were really much about what everybody in this room strives to have happen, which is successes for our, our graduates. So that was worth getting up very early in the morning and, and standing in line for a very long time to do all of that. Mentioned to that, I appreciated Dr. Vashinsky, including me, in the community celebrating diversity, youth scholarship perception. It was held at SCC. It's a program that the city of Scottsdale, but the community college and Eric's involvement are sponsoring. Some interesting opportunities for scholarships for students who are going on to do bigger and better things. And it also a great experience to see the success there. And as mentioned, several of all of us, I think, were involved with the AACT Conference, with all trustee conference in late April. And on top of that, a couple of other meetings involving the PAC Committee. And I serve on the Public Affairs Committee for A, as we said, all the right As and Cs, AACT. No, one, one A, two Cs, yeah. The National Groups Meeting, which also keeps us appraised in what's happening in Capitol Hill. So with that, you've seen the support has been very busy attending events. And I want to echo all of the congratulations to the teams at every campus who did great events, recognizing success of our students. I will also echo to Tamara, looking forward to your service. There's helps and nothing on that table though too, because I think he will continue to, to be a mentor and a supporter. The last item of business we have tonight is to, is to remind in the next meeting dates, first being June 11, 2024, which is a special meeting regarding charter high school budgets, followed by our agenda review. And then the governing board will have an executive session regarding the chancellor evaluation. On June 25th, there'll be a public hearing regarding the charter high school budgets, mainly followed by the regular governing board meeting. And then the, the board and chancellor will meet at five o'clock for an executive session, also dating with the chancellor evaluation. With those on our calendar, that concludes the agenda for this evening. Let the record be lifted, the May 28, 2024 governing board meeting of Maricopa Community College District is adjourned at 8:40. Meeting adjourned.